Dear Lord, we want to enter into your courtroom with praise for what you have given us. We want to thank you for the resources that we have, including all the natural resources in our county, all the resources of the hardworking and dedicated employees that we have and servants who always aim to make life better in this county. We thank you for the opportunity to make decisions today and to meet and to discuss all the things that come before us. We want to thank you for all of our blessings that you've given us and help us to make wise decisions and serve you in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Hey, should have received the minutes from the June 24 meeting. Anybody have any questions or comments on those?
I'm good.
Not a motion approved?
We kept the minutes from June 24.
I'll second.
Okay, that motion passes. I do. Yeah, before we get started today, we have a special recognition. Holly, come up, please. You may not be aware, I know I was kind of surprised when I read it because I hadn't heard about it before, but such a high honor, I was, I thought, man, our public health nurse, Holly De Getz, is, has, was named the state public health nurse of the year for the state statewide. So, what an honor. My gosh. Can you tell us a little bit about that honor? Because I'm not that familiar with it.
So, there's like 92 counties.
Right.
We all have public health nurses. So, all of the public health nurses, you get nominated, people send in your nomination, and then they send, people send in and vote for you or whatever. And the state also looks at your background, what you've done and your achievements. Because I am, I'm in connection with state people all the time, so, and that, but I couldn't do it. I'm going to say, it's not on me. I can't do it without my team. I can't do it without Kristen Ramsey, my clinic manager, and Cindy Curtis, my school liaison. It takes a whole team to do this, and I can't, couldn't do it without them, so it's everybody, so.
So, out of 92 counties, you were named the top in the state.
Yes.
Wow, congratulations.
Congratulations, Holly.
Thank you, but like I said, couldn't do it without them, so.
So, you were 20 years just in Adams County?
I've been 10, yeah, I was 10 years part-time, and then I'm going on my 11th year full-time in September, so I've been here almost 21 years.
Great.
Yeah, in Adams County, and I've always been a public health nurse, so.
Fantastic. What an honor.
Thank you, thank you.
How many years as a nurse overall? How many years in nursing overall since you got your degree?
Um, 96.
96.
All right.
That's nice, Eric, you're making a giveaway already.
Are you a local person? Were you born around there?
Yes, sir.
You went to school here in Belmont Prep or what? What year?
I graduated in '85.
Okay, now, now, you're really there.
You're really there. Really zero again already.
I'm a lady, I was good, and I've been around. I would figure it out, yeah, my main name was Bonnie.
Check out the early witnesses.
I saw, that's where I saw the article at. Yeah, good job.
I didn't know it was going to be a month. I didn't know, so.
I brought the Democrat along for a nicer copy for you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Well, congratulations again. What a great job you do and our, our, our health department, our, our clinic and the health department is overall probably a department that we just really don't appreciate enough for the work that you do, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks for everything you do and trying to keep our county healthy, and I know it's not an easy task.
No, but it's all about educating, that's, and that's what, that's what I enjoyed being on is educating, getting the word out there, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, Holly.
Thank you.
Hey, Tony, what have you got for us this morning?
The first thing I have is the, hold on, here, I gotta sign this. Allied Weekly Health Insurance Claims, and it's all medical. It's only $6,020. There were some stop loss in there, but it brought it down to $6,020. I did not stand to make one.
Wow.
It was last week.
Yeah, I'm making up for last week.
Stop loss helped us on this.
Make a motion to cover, do that for the rest of the year.
Yeah, just, just fix that, fix that for the rest of the year.
Allied Weekly, $6,020 moved.
So.
Yeah, the motion passes. Thanks, guys.
Okay, next, you should have received via email the payroll time card approval for appointing department heads.
Yeah, I did. I had a chance to take a look at that, and I would make a motion to approve time cards as presented.
Second, the motion?
Yeah, that motion passes. And next, we're going to have utilities paid in Lao, and I did pass, I passed that out to you before the meeting as well as the 2024 and 2025 comparisons. The total for the utilities paid in Lao is $36,951.20, $36,951.20.
I move that we approve the Lao payment for utilities for the amount of $36,951.20.
I'd second that, and once again, I do appreciate you doing that look back.
Yep.
Well, I do too.
Wanted to help speed time with that, too, so.
Yeah.
Next, we have payroll claims. The payroll claims are in the amount of $394,985.67, $394,985.67. Motion approved.
Second.
Those two things.
This is a passes. Six seven, six.
Right. Moving right along, we have the Allied Monthly Payment. That's the, not just administration, but all the various things that are on this second page here for all the people enrolled and so forth. And that amount is $71,097.85, $71,097.85. Whoops, I signed that one too.
I moved that we pay the Allied Monthly for $71,097.85. Second.
Okay, motion passes. And then I handed out to you prior to the meeting, and the press should have it also, the animal control report submitted by Chad Springer. I actually gave you two things that he had written out. He had one by hand and one on this sheet.
Not the same, right? They're two different ones?
315 is toil mileage. Well, this one is animal shelter. The one in your right hand is also animal control. He brings that up, and then we make the other thing, or he, he brings two of them. One of them's handwritten, the other one's not.
Okay, okay.
I'll make a motion over the animal control to accept that into that.
I, I'll second Stan's motion.
Okay, motion passes. Okay. And I also hand it to you and to the press prior to the meeting, the Animal Shelter Report submitted by Mike and Cindy Heiser. Like, cats claimed two, you still have nine cats, one dog was adopted, two claimed, three transferred, eight they still have.
Nine cats and eight dogs they still have.
See no reason not to approve that, so I'll move that we do.
Yeah.
And what I do is the control and the shelter, I just, you guys approve entering it into the record.
I, I haven't seen, do they put this on Facebook? I think, I don't know if anybody's seen it or how they advertise the animals.
They, 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 they do, yes. My wife kind of follows that. I, I, I don't know what I, what they've had out there recently, but I know they have historically put those out on Facebook.
How about the paper? Do they put anything in the paper if they got animals?
I'm not sure what Joe gets, but they get a lot.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they do. I could probably rely on Facebook.
Yeah. Like, sometimes somebody finds a dog and takes it there, they'll take a picture of it and put it on Facebook. This your dog? It was turned in at the shelter.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I'll see, we need a motion to accept the shelter reported. We do that already.
Oh, yeah, motion to.
I'll second.
That was true.
Yeah, motion passes.
That'd be Mike and Cindy Heiser.
Yeah.
Yep.
The only other thing, and I, I honestly don't remember if I brought this up or not because we had to wait until we got okay to announce it. Steve Bailey already knows because he was at the exit conference. We got, well, squeaky clean for our ARPA audit, no findings, no anything else, and very happy. Well, ARPA, I think, I think I've had ARPA every year since I came on because that's when COVID hit. I don't, I don't think we've had findings or anything at any audit that we've had in the last five years. And that's a testament to my staff, and they know, they know their stuff. And I know, I know both Stan and Steve have been in those interns and exit conferences, so shout out to my people for,
Yep.
for doing that.
Yeah, very good work.
Yeah, comments that I have heard have always been very complimentary of the work that, that the auditor staff does and how they track those expenditures and supporting documentation and everything else. So, so congratulations and thank you.
They aren't allowed to say anything until they say it's okay.
Right, until they finalize their audit.
Well, and especially through this last year when we had to make sure that, or you had to make sure that we had all our contracts signed.
All of them obligated, yeah.
Yeah, any obligations.
And Tony, is all of ARPA money out now? It's all gone?
It is all obligated.
All obligated.
Which means there are certain things that are contracted that I have, which means they're obligated, so they have until the end of 2026 to spend those dollars.
And that was 6.2 million, right?
6.9 million.
6.9, okay, I knew it was big. Okay, is that a force tonny? Hey, Nate, come on up.
Two little items for you. First one is a correction for Bridge 122. That's that gargrail quote that we received from CTEC. That's the bridge on 400 South over the Mathias Mill ditch, just west of St. Lamro. Last week, I received a call from CTEC representatives regarding discrepancy in the quote that they had provided that was approved previously for the gargrail work. The quote had included $500 for mobilization of D-mob in their price. As you may recall, a similar project that they've been awarded on for gargrail work on Triple Zero, $2,500 in mobilization of D-mob. It might have come up, but during the conversation, I can't quite recall, CTEC has asked if the county would be willing to entertain corrective prices. As they, they've stated, it should have been 2,500, not 500 in their price. I said, well, it's going to be, ultimately, it's going to be a commissioner's approval for that since it was a quote that we provided. I recommended to them that if, rather than just us trying to eat the 100% of that price increase, they would be one to accept half or $1,250. Sort of a shared pain in that because it's an apparent discrepancy clearly from the two quotes. The word, I don't think we want to try and gouge contractor in their mistake, but certainly I don't know that we should be 100% holding the bank for that. So, with your approval, if you're, if you'd be willing to entertain that, I could proceed with that updated pricing for it, but.
Sounds like it was, it was an honest mistake.
Yeah, and I think we even noted it when we saw those bids. It's like, man, that mobilization number looks really low.
Back to back.
We, we, we tried to justify it in our minds, but we recognized that that number was abnormally low when we accepted that bid.
Correct, and they're, they're coming in from the southwest side of Indianapolis for a project. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's a bit of a, it's a bit of a haul for them, so it makes more sense as far as the MOB D-MOB, as far as getting everything delivered and set, set up. So, for where we're at as a contractor, I don't feel bad with that. And it is some money that obviously we're trying to share the pain with the contractor, doing our due diligence as far as trying not to be a sucker.
Do we need a motion on the, on the adjustment?
I, I think so, since we already accepted that quote.
It's a change.
I, I move that we accept Nate's recommendation of the adjustment on the Bridge 122. I'll second that.
Good. Well, again, I think that's important that we keep good relationship with our, with our vendors, with our, with our contractors, and, and I, I always want people to walk away feeling good about the work they're doing for Adams County.
I appreciate that. It, it makes it easier working with my contractors. If I don't take advantage of them when they make a mistake, then hopefully they won't do the same.
You bet.
I don't have a lot of bidders when it comes to gargrail work. It's something that I'm trying to work with is to find a way to bundle projects so that it's more appealing to get votes when we're doing that work. Because right now, it seems like it's always emergency, one-off small projects, and we pay a premium for that. So, I'm trying to find ways to make that better. So, again, thank you. Then lastly, just an update for you on our small structures for this year, issue excavating. I have noted planning on, he actually is out there, I got confirmation just, just during the meeting here, that they are out working on Small Structure 29 this week, so they're out there today. I think the, the road is now closed, so 100 north between 300 and 400 west, they're working on. Hopefully, that'll be in today and then open for traffic late tomorrow. That does have a concrete patch as part of that work, so they'll end up hopefully having the concrete overlay on it, let that cure, and with the Hyerly strength, plan would be to have that open to traffic and fix that, so. Other than that, any questions for me?
I have none.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Nate. You're working on just a kind of a schedule, a tentative schedule. You were working with Brad on, on putting a road schedule, road improvement schedule. Is that something that's going to be out months or year or how?
How far out would that, their long-range plan be?
Before we come back with, with a plan like that.
The, the intent would be about a five-year, five-year plan. It's tough to do as long as what I'm trying to do with the bridges just because the asset doesn't have it longer than a same service line.
But I guess.
When do you want it?
I mean, I think honestly, we could do it here in two weeks, two months.
Okay, that's what I was.
Because we talked this morning already a little bit.
Gotcha.
We're going to sit down next, take time and sit down next week. Not that we don't see each other.
That, that'd be nice to see something to, to help do the planning for, for 26 and.
Yeah.
Absolutely, we're working on that, and I'm hoping within the month, absolutely.
Yeah.
Since this is the first day of the second half of the year. Well, good morning, gentlemen. Basically, the one thing I have today, one of our stone road conversions is that the initial petition is signed by all landowners that they would agree to give up conditional right of way as they all agree.
Yep.
So, the next step is to bring this to you, gentlemen, to get your approval to move forward with the project. It is County Road 600 East between 900 South and 1,000 South.
Everybody's agreed, huh?
The initial petition, yes. And so then, you know, the next steps will be, we'll return to the office to get all the official, official paperwork signed and done. And then, at that point, then we can contact utilities and get them moving, so, yes.
Did you say 800 South or 9?
Uh, 600 East between 900 South and 1,000.
Okay, I, I thought you said 800, 900, that's two miles instead of one, just one mile.
Yes.
Right.
Correct.
That's pretty good going into a project that says potential issues, none. It's like, all right.
It sounds good.
Kind of like you could say, what could possibly happen?
Yep.
Is there a reason, just out of curiosity, is there a reason that you picked out that specific mile versus the one north of it?
Yeah, we actually, we don't initiate this, the landowners initiate it.
Okay.
And come to our office, and what we like to do is if they could pick out one landowner that would kind of oversee and make sure they talk to everybody.
Okay.
So, yes, the, one of the landowners out there came in and got all the forms and got everybody's signatures or agreement to do it, so.
Well, I think that's what you've always told people. If you're looking for a road improvement, then that's how you get on the road schedule by doing exactly what they've done.
Yep, and, you know, we're just asking them to help, give a little bit so we can improve it.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Hey, Brad, this is going from stone seal, right?
Correct.
That's what I thought you meant.
Yep.
That'll be no doubt, whether this year or next year.
Oh, no, no. I mean, it's really hard to say, but I'd say it's at least a couple of years out.
At least two years.
Yeah, till we get through all the steps and processes.
They'll get through to four, and this one, that'd be five. Approximately, just approximately, how many gravel roads do we have left in the county?
105 miles.
About 105 left, okay, and obviously, there's, someone will never get, some of those roads are not worthy of.
Incorrect, not that they wouldn't be worthy, but a lot of the places, some of the landowners are not willing to give up that 10-foot, and that's their right. That is absolutely their right, so I just shut that down, that section, so.
Yeah, I still can't believe how fast you got 300 North done.
And I will say again, I'll give a shout out to Brooks, you know, Brooks does a very good job, and they come in and they hit it and they go, so, yes.
They got a full schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One of the, one of the things that was brought to my attention is a part of the vision planning work. I think they're working on something they call a current conditions report. And I noticed in the current condition report that, that, that study from 2011, I think it was, that, that addressed several of these road improvement preferences or requests or whatever. And if I'm not mistaken, 300 was on that, on that list from 2011. So, here we are, 15 years later, getting that road improved.
Yes.
So, this takes a little while, but, so that I, I, again, in going through that study, and I haven't, I haven't reviewed the whole study, but just from the summary that American Search Point put together in that current condition report, there were several roads on there that were listed as targets for improvement or, or projects that needed done, and I think if I'm not mistaken, most of those have been completed. So, I think that whole, you know, I know Stan, you're looking for a kind of a, a vision plan of what, where we're going to go from here. It's good if you can start with what's, what's the vision for the, the transportation infrastructure of the county, how that works then into kind of this long-range planning, and then short range, what are we going to do this year, next year, and the year following? But keeping in mind that big picture that says this is the way we want it to look when we're done based upon what we know today. That can always change.
Yeah.
But based on what we know today and some input from the county, input from residents, it's nice if you can have that vision for the transportation infrastructure for the county.
Yep.
When we're, when we're doing improvements like this or improvements like 300.
Yeah, yep.
One of the things I noticed on 300, this is just an off-the-cuff comment, when you, when you create a, a, a preferred method of traversing the county, think about stop signs and which road stops for which, and does that need to change then? So, I noticed, obviously, 400 makes sense because that's also a primary artery going north and south.
Yes.
But I think there's also a stop sign at 300 maybe when I wrote, drove it. Maybe it was 500, 300, or 200, one in there, I thought, huh, I don't know that that stop sign makes sense based upon the strategy.
I think the first one is at 400.
Okay.
Then I, it might be out at.
Because I would have, anyway, it's irrelevant, but what, but when we, when we begin to think about this artery system, then you begin to think, okay, we're going to improve the road. Not only do we have to do that, we have to think about who yields and how many times I have to stop if I'm going to hop on 300 and go from 27 to Bluffton.
Yeah.
How many times I have to stop? Does it make sense that I'm stopping for this road? Anyway, a lot to think about there, I know, but.
And there, there is a lot of thinking that goes into that, as you're saying, because just like you said, the 400 is another major.
Absolutely, somebody's got to yield, somebody's got to stop.
Well, we hope so.
You bet.
One, one of the problems with changing stop signs is people have to get used to it.
Oh, it's terrible.
Some serious accidents.
It's terrible when you think about it.
I had, I had, I had the, I almost run the one on 124 in Monroe a couple of times.
Yeah.
So, I got used to it.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a lot to consider, I know, but I think that has to be part of kind of this long-term vision.
Matter of fact, I was going east, somebody was coming west, and if the car had stopped coming west, I don't know if I, I might have blew through it.
Yeah. Reminded you. Yeah, very good.
I, I don't think we need to vote on this or approve.
Probably, I don't, I.
I, I don't think.
What is that?
The conversion, the initial processing done now, so they can agree to do it.
I mean, I would just make a motion to agree to let the highway department.
Move forward with, with convers, converting this road from stone to chip seal.
I'll make that motion, it's just.
Okay.
It's dangerous.
I'll second.
Okay.
If you can make 900 North a limited access road, I could get to Hyerly's quicker.
Is that the one that goes straight over there?
Oh, yeah.
Might have to try it someday. Not during the day. So, yeah, the only other thing I really have is we're out, the guys are out chip sealing, and I'm not, I'm not going to say, seems to be going well. Going okay, huh? No, no major breakdowns? Good, anyhow. Good deal.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. Oh, I don't see, Rick is there, hiding in the back corner. Come on up, Rick.
Guys, just a lot of ones and twos and things.
Sure.
Really not. Bathrooms, some bathrooms plugged up. I had an air ha, air handler leak, condensation.
Was that done by the surveyor?
Plugged up a drain or something?
Yeah, I had to blow it out. I want to thank everybody that had any effort with that. One thing I did want to mention, I don't know if it has been, I don't know really what's going on, but everybody just kind of have a little prayer for Ed Dyer.
Yeah.
He's coming through some stuff, so, anyway, don't know anything about it.
Okay.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I should have included that this morning in my prayer, and I did so.
We had a, I had to put some freon in a heat pump over the courthouse last week. It's working good now. Hopefully, it lasts. We got to find the leak.
Yep.
So, that's going on.
Was that the, the newer stuff, the R410A, or was that the older R22?
This was the old.
Are you still able to get that?
Yeah, but it's scarce. Yeah, that takes the old. I'm just, that's what I asked you, are we going to be able to keep getting this?
Yeah.
Anyway, bathroom was, is reopened.
Would it, Rick, would it do any good to, on, on, since we've had so many plugs on this particular restroom and even the other one that you were talking about, would it do any good to send just a reminder out to employees in the service complex that, you know, excessive use of toilet paper isn't good? Obviously, flushing hand wipes does not disintegrate, the same as toilet paper. And, you know, just kind of a reminder, ma, maybe, maybe would, maybe there's somebody out there that's doing some things they shouldn't be doing. I don't know.
I don't think it hurts. I'm going to use Shannon's expertise on that about maybe sending something out, but.
I mean, you don't want to accuse anybody of anything, but, but if, if every employee, maybe it'll strike a bell someone, who knows?
So.
Okay, good.
Well, it's an old building with old plumbing, and it does not act like a new building does, so.
Just to refresh her, what's going on? I know Steve is aware of it. The gas company came, and this is all about the church over here. Nothing to do with the county or the building. They came and dug it up, Steve, they located the gas line out here because the church is getting, getting rid of some meters, but they had an emergency, so they pulled it out. So, they came back later in the day, late on Friday. They filled it in with stone because the hole was pretty deep.
Right.
So, that's not done.
So, it's not done yet?
Yeah, of course, the gentleman I was talking to, they don't do the sketching or anything.
Yeah.
Stay away from.
Just trying to make sure we don't interrupt the, yeah, the food bank work that happens.
Just letting you know, it's not done. Again, take that gravel out of that.
Good deal. Okay. Yeah, I would have assumed it was done. Yeah, I would've assumed it was done. Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else for Rick?
I don't.
Thanks guys, thanks Rick. Trey, come on up, you're gonna give us an update.
Adams County, morning, gentlemen.
Morning Trey.
First little tidbit here, um. Um, be welcome home, uh, Vietnam Veterans Event, um, that was put on by the Daughters of the American Revolution. Um, to my knowledge, I believe in March, they had their last function, um, I was lucky enough to attend a couple of those in our county. Uh, really awesome events for um, the Vietnam era individuals, uh, where they gave out these um, really cool books, Indiana Edition two. I was actually lucky enough to get a box of these books, um, I plan on keeping a few of these in the office, just for anybody who didn't have the chance to um, you know, make it to the event, make them come in, we got the break room right there, they can sit in the office, what have you, take a look through it, pretty good stuff in here. Um, so, yeah, that's um, and on that note too, um, I think the only place I haven't got um, a couple of books to be the VFW down Geneva. Um, I've been talking with um, Wes down there, um, hopefully he stops by and gets some, but the Legions have them, you know, here in, in Burne. And also the VFW, they got a few copies, so pretty cool books, if you need to look at them, you wanna check them out, get a hold of all the entities. Uh, so, and the Peace Monument stuff, hopefully um, you guys had a chance to check that email out, I sent you, I think on the eighteenth, I wanna say last month. Um, I sent a letter to the Troyer Masonry outfit, um, haven't heard back from them yet, so still kind of um, working some angles on that. Um, as far as the state of the monument, it's a little bit beat up, me and Doug, we went over there and checked it out. Um, Rick hooked me up with one of his guides that he trusts, um, Miguel with Moss Quality Construction. They gave me a quote um, for thirty-six hundred dollars to um, pretty much revamp it, get it sealed and stuff. Thoughts or thoughts and opinions on that, um, cause I think, I believe that fund, I believe, has like fourteen thousand.
Okay, yeah, we've got money in the fund to do that.
So if I can, if you know, your guys is, go ahead, I, I'd like to give them a call today, if that's okay.
Sure, I don't have, I don't have no problem with that.
Pressure wash and reseal it?
I don't know about the pressure washing part, um, I think Rick used TLC back in the day as far as that goes, um. But uh, so the big, the big concern would be the seal on, I mean, there's just big gaps between the staffs, have you ever been over there? They're gonna get rid of all the old stuff.
They came out and taken.
Yeah, yeah, we, me, Rick and Miguel, we went over there and kinda went over everything, so um, yeah, I'd like to give them a call today.
Tony, that fund, uh, we're permit, that, that would be, we're permit.
It's the Peace Monument Fund.
Okay, yeah, I'll do that, uh, Trey, go ahead and, and get this confirmed in and get the job done.
Good.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, motion passes.
Very good, um, and last uh, week, Monday and Tuesday, we had the IDVA Annual Conference down in Indianapolis. Um, overall, pretty good stuff, um, some remedial things, some things I just wasn't really too impressed on, um, but that's um, hit or miss with those.
Maybe not the best one you've ever attended.
Yeah, definitely, um, but um, the biggest thing obviously that we're tracking on is the SB four three three, the IDVA kind of jurisdiction over the CBSO's. Um, confirmed down there that they're staying at the county level, which is really good, uh, the biggest thing would obviously be um, the IDVA wants to introduce KPIs, um, key performance indicators, I believe, um, just what I'm taking from it, and I think all the other CBSO's are as well, is um, it's just gonna be better training, holding BSO's accountable, more accountable, you know, making sure the jobs are done, which I'm all for, I mean, more training, the merrier. To bring it on, you know, really, um, on that note too, um, last Thursday, the Indiana Veteran Association, they had a virtual little public uh, public hearing, they wanted to get like opinions on the KPIs, how they should differ, you know, obviously between, obviously the KPIs are gonna be different from small, small Adams County, Sharon, Allen County, so um, Katie Jordan up in Allen County Veteran Service Office, she kinda voiced her opinion on that, on how they're gonna do it. It's still really ground level, I think they're gonna introduce it um, July of next year as to what it's gonna entail, but I, I know a lot of us that we're really excited, you know, so. Um, obviously we know veteran benefits are not to be taken lightly, they definitely aren't here in Adams County, so I think this is just gonna um, improve how the jobs get done and hopefully on the end goal be providing more benefits to veterans and their families, so I think that was the big takeaway from it.
Well, I, obviously, th- those KPIs then begin to help you focus on what is perceived to be the most important aspects of the job, so you can function in those key performance indicators and, 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 and begin to measure that if it's not being measured already, so you know, what gets measured gets managed, so.
So, and other than that, yeah, the um, I thought a cool part two on the IDVA's website, if you get on there, I think it's called the Transparency Portal. Um, it's a little tab you can click on there and it shows the whole state of Indiana, you can select your county on there and it shows you all the statistics on, I thought that was really cool. Um, it shows how we're doing relative to other counties and stuff, um, so I think that goes hand in hand with that GDX as well, so just see how, you know, how many veterans we got, what kinda money we're getting from the fe- the federal side for the VA, so. Um, other than that, we're open eight to one, Monday through Friday, please come see me, if you need anything, give me a call, text me, email me, swing by.
Now, did we ever make, ever find someone that would, could engrave the, if there's a blank brick and someone wanted to put their name on the brick, is there a firm out there?
I haven't looked into that, Angie told me that the Troyers, they might've did it, but.
Libby Monument does a lot of that.
Yeah, Libby, yeah, that was my big, yeah.
They've done uh, the other brick that were pre-registered.
I thought that Libby said, told someone, hey, they would do it if the brick came to them, but to come out and do the brick.
Oh, yeah, that was my biggest, how do they get the brick off, get it to Libby, they get it back on there, if somebody could just, I thought Angie might've mentioned that Troyers could do it there.
Right, do it on.
That'd be the easiest way, if somebody just go do it right there.
Right.
Then we, then we not pay Troyers.
I know Libby's has that capability, but I don't know how they're.
They don't wanna come out and do it on the brick, it'd be a, it'd be a pain in the neck, taking the brick out of there and reordering it.
Do something like that on their laser machine.
And I, yeah, and I went over there and they don't have the capability to bring their, um, I think it was either sit, the, I think the engraving, like you said, the laser one.
Right.
If it was sandblasted, I think that they said they can do it, but it's the, the other one, so that's the holdup.
Yeah.
Cause didn't they one time like have a mason take, take the brick out and replace it or?
Yeah, from uh, past invoices that I, I scanned, I got everything.
Or they would just take a brick to Libby's having an engraving.
Yeah, it was, and Troyers is like the middleman, I think that, I don't know how it worked.
Well, either way, until we figure out a way to, can get done, we can't really PR the opportunity for someone to.
And I've had a few, few individuals ask, I'm sad, we're still kinda ground level trying to get it revamped, um, everybody's being really nice and patient, so.
Yeah, well, see if we can find somebody with either, either way, I don't care if the brick comes out and gets done, or if they come out and do it on the brick, but we need to find someone that can do it.
One company, yeah, so I'm all ears, anybody tell me if anybody.
I don't know of anyone, I don't know of anyone, there's gotta be somebody out there that does that kinda stuff, but.
Yeah, let me know.
Yeah. Troyers, if, if the Troyer you're talking about, is that the same one that I told you about, like it was on like seven hundred?
Three east, seven hundred south.
Seven hundred south and it'd be one, uh, one fifty east. The, you, the question is, can, will he have time to even mess with coming in to do a couple of bricks, I don't know. He may have to take a trip out there because his driver has a cell phone, but he probably.
Probably my best, you know, you have just the water out there, you know.
Catch him.
Yeah.
I'll check it out too a little bit, I'm down that way.
Great.
Okay.
I know, that's all I had.
Good.
Okay, thanks for the.
I appreciate it, thank you, alrighty.
We're running a little ahead of, ahead of schedule, Arc Wind would be next in the queue, but let's move on to Clayton, Clayton, have you got anything for us?
Um, the only thing, and, and it's not in fully completed form, but I think previously, um, you guys would remember Ian Gilbert with Community Corrections came uh, to the Commissioners, um, and along with the Sheriff to um, kind of enlighten you all that now based on statute, um, the Community Corrections Officers no, no longer fall under the category of Special Deputy um, under the Sheriff's Department, um, and therefore there, there's not really a statutory means by which they can carry firearms. Um, so I did the research on that, um, and really we can, we can resolve that issue simply by resolution of the Commissioners allowing, I mean, we just need to have a resolution naming those Community Corrections Officers and allowing them to carry firearms. The biggest, uh, the biggest part of it is obviously they can carry firearms in Indiana, it's a, you know, a concealed carry state. Uh, the resolution really deals with the fact that they can carry firearms and are allowed in our, on our premises. Um, the, the biggest thing and, and I, I made notes, I, I have it basically completed, other than um, I still wanna meet with the Sheriff and put some provisions in as to the required training, that because, because that requiring that training by resolution for us will, will limit liability on the county, um, if something ever would come up, you would hope it wouldn't.
So we as the Commissioners cannot name them as special deputies though?
Correct, we cannot, we cannot name them as special deputies now with the, with now how the statute reads.
Can the Sheriff?
No, that, then that's, that's what was previously had been done, is they, is the Sheriff basically named them special deputies, um, and that's how they, they got those privileges to carry their firearms and, and um, county-owned property, um, now that, that has changed, so we just need to have this done, um.
So by resolution, the Commissioners can authorize them to carry them out?
Correct, and the, 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 in a, but for instance, one, two, three, four, five, six, it's, it's six individuals within the Community Corrections. Um, again, I think it's just, it, it makes sense for me to talk with the Sheriff and Ian to identify, I think they've already talked about what type of training they're going to undergo and maintain, but to put that in the resolution seems prudent. The only other thing um, is, it, it, nothing that we can put in by way of resolution, but they had questions about whether or not the Community Corrections Officers could carry on school grounds, um, because as a special deputy, you have that privilege. Um, obviously as a regular citizen, you do not have that privilege to bring a firearm onto school grounds.
I, I wonder how extensive that would have to be, cause it, I think it would have to be more than just standard firearm training. It would almost have to be training in police tactics, I suppose, to some extent, wouldn't it? But I mean, not like the full academy that an officer.
Um, I, I think, and I can talk more with, with Ian, I think in reality, uh, standard firearms training is probably enough, because again, the Community Corrections Officers aren't really going out there and doing tasks that require police training, I think if anything, the reason they carry firearms is for self-defense or precarious, precarious situations.
So they don't have arrest powers?
Generally, I don't, no, they don't, they do not, and they will, they, they may have under, as special deputies, but they, they no longer do. So, um, and related to the schools, I, I'm working with Ian on that, I think that it's generally, we've accepted with them no longer being special deputies, that they just generally will not. Um, but there are provisions in the state code that if, if Ian wants to, or if he wants me to, I can go to each of the school boards within Adams County and just get school board approval, and then they, they can carry on those properties as well.
Now, do they, you said, you mentioned six individuals, do they all maintain the same weapon? Or, I mean, the Sheriff's Department would have control over what they're carrying, but is there any control that, I mean, what kind of weapon are they carrying? Carrying a forty-five or thirty-eight?
Is there a standard issue?
A judge or?
I, I'm not, I'm not sure of that, again, I think that that would be um, something I need to, to ask Ian, um, and possibly um, ask him and then decide or come back to you guys and decide whether or not in the resolution, we delineate with, you know, some specificity, what type of sidearm they can carry.
Be good, like get somebody carrying a.
Rather than somebody carrying a, a judge.
If, if it's a resolution coming from the Commissioners, that would be nice to state in that resolution. Because they're, you know, officers of the court, because they're um, put, put in harms way on a regular basis in the line of duty, you know, and just kinda check off all the reasons why, yes, they, they should be carrying weapons while they're on duty, a- and then, you know, that would help kind of, I think, define what training that we would.
Yeah, I mean, one officers of the court, they're put, they're put at times in situations in which their physical persons could be threatened, um, and, and, and self-defense that, you know, those situations could lead to self-defense that calls for, you know.
Is the gun, is that purchased through Community Corrections Funds, or is that, are the weapons they're carrying, is that purchased person, as a personal thing, I, I don't know.
I honestly, I, I don't know that either, so I need to, I mean, there's a lot of those questions, I just wanted to kinda bring that to you guys as an update that.
Yeah.
I mean, the general format of it and is done, um, I, again, I did the research, I even looked at comparable resolutions, um, I think other counties have basically what I have here today, that's all that they have, but I think that um, putting in those additional provisions we've talked about today uh, is prudent to, to make it more sound.
You know, the other thing that would justify, you know, there, there are other options other than deadly force, such as the, the tear gas launchers, like the burner launchers, the tasers, the, things like that. You know, and, and I don't know if that's worth defining in this resolution or not, or justifying.
Yeah, I think the sad thing you run into, especially.
Launchers, you know, they'll incapacitate someone without deadly force, but.
I think sadly, the, the thing you run into with like tear gas launchers and tasers is a lot of those do require some form of, of police training to be authorized to carry.
Right.
And that's not to say these Community Corrections Officers don't have training, I know all of them do, um, obviously not to the level of Sheriff's Deputy, but um.
I guess I'm just looking at it in, in the terms of, you know, if, if we enact this resolution, you know, we're, we're creating a, a liability on what we're doing and why we're doing it, and I just uh, always wanna be able to justify what, what we're doing.
Yeah, no, definitely. But that is really it, just to bring you guys that update, um, for the time being, unless you guys have any other questions for me, I do not have anything else.
Anything else, Stan? I, I don't know that I do.
Good, thanks Clay. Megan, must be, you must be marked this morning, huh?
Yeah, he uh, decided to take the week off, so.
Yeah.
What? Out there.
What?
Alright, so I just got three subdivisions. First one is gentle acres.
Megan, we play a lot, and Erica will vote on this too.
I mean.
Three and a half to zero.
So it's on seven hundred west, I believe it is just north of three hundred south, and they're just taking twelve, or twenty-seven some acres, splitting it into two, they do have the proper egress for the back lot.
Yeah, that's kinda lost to the.
Yes, I don't see a problem with our move that we accept the uh.
Gentle acres. Yeah, second. It, motion passes. My name is Lee's.
Next is uh, Brian Mitchum subdivision. This one is out on six hundred east and two twenty-four. It's three lots. And they're splitting the buildings out and then two different uh, parcels for the ground.
And it all.
And the corner lot has access on both sides.
And just out of curiosity, I have seen no problems with, with, uh, passing this one. But down the roads where someone that has this thirty-two acre would wanna split that, could they do that?
With a major subdivision. So that would be a reason to be residential, commercial or industrial, and then it.
How many times?
Awesome, those elbows.
Super secret squirrel stuff.
Technical foul that.
Everybody, uh, everybody out there in livestream land knows.
Oh my god.
Why that happened.
Last one is Mojer, B R F subdivision. It's down on eleven hundred south. West of four hundred east and they are splitting off a two acre lot in the midst of the farm. I assume that they're gonna be wanting to build a house.
So likewise here, uh, likewise here, if they would ever wanna do any air splits on this whole, on this area.
They have one more shot at it. Cause you're, you're allowed three lots in a minor subdivision.
So what are all these buildings?
Those are.
Is those CFOs or?
No, they used to be a dairy farm. That was a, that was a dairy farm. I think they still have some livestock out there.
Not live, not intensive though.
So there's no set, setbacks happening if they build a house?
No, they're good.
One of those first proposers, I immediately contacted, literally and surveyed and said, hey, just to let your client know. And they came back saying the client is saying it's no longer active.
Judy Merkel grew up.
But it's not there.
So like then if they wanted to reactivate that as a, a CFO, they couldn't do that either because it's in.
Not without variances.
When they got their own house, there's another house sits right there, living residence.
Looks like a mobile home and a two-story.
So what'd the plan commission say about it? They were okay as long as there's no confined feeding or?
Uh, it meets all the requirements for design committee, so. So I have official documentation that from, in the last, from the client that it's not active. So we have plenty of empty barns that were intensives out there. If they ever wanna repopulate, it just has to go in front of B Z A for the distance and then plan commission for the operation.
Good. Motion from Doug. Second from Stan. Motion passes. Alright, appreciate the guidance. Anything else for Megan?
That's hot.
Hey.
Hey Shannon. Can we increase her hourly wage since she's marked?
Appreciate the try.
Worth a shot.
Hey Stan, your son.
Thanks Megan. Shannon, have you got anything for us?
Just a thought.
Just a thought.
Uh, yesterday I sent you guys, um, a, some updates to the scale for the comp plan that we talked about in council a couple of weeks ago. I just didn't know if you had any thoughts or feedback on that.
Pretty granular to me. I, I don't know that I have a preference, so whatever council prefers in my mind.
Just because of the conversation at council last. Had the authority, I just wanted to, to bring it up to you guys too.
Had to do it to twenty-five cents.
Twenty-five cents and how that's, how that's, um, prorated based upon the, uh, the score of the evaluation.
That's probably a nerd arena.
Yeah, and there were three different plans that Sharon presented, or Shannon presented and. I, I don't know that I had a preference one over the other, so.
That was my only thought.
Good deal. Thanks Shannon. Anything else from you guys? Updates or anything?
Uh, the only thing, I, I don't know. Needs to be brought up, but, uh, I did have an opportunity after our last, we were approached by Devon Beaumont. Uh, I did contact the, the, uh, an inspector from the Department of I D M on Land Management. And had a good conversation with him and he discussed, uh, his different visits to the lagoon site and his reports that he had done. He'd also done visits and reports from some of the contributors of material to that site. And so he made those reports. He said they're public information. So he made those reports available to me and I, uh, passed those along to the Beaumonts. And so hopefully that helps them towards a resolution, so. But he was very, very friendly, very cooperative, very open discussion, so. So, you know, I think, I think the Beaumonts appreciated that.
Yeah, thanks for reaching out on our behalf. Thanks. Appreciate you doing that for us.
And I drove past there different times just to see what the effects are in the neighborhood and stuff, so. So, other than that, I didn't have anything.
Doug, anything?
I don't.
Good. Um, just a, a comment maybe for the press. Um, we are, uh, the, the vision plan is in kind of the public information gathering phase. So there's a, a team that have placed, um, QR codes that you can scan and actually there's a survey out there that can be taken. Uh, uh, and the, the, there's information boards out at several of the, uh, businesses throughout the county. Uh, and, and public, uh, arenas throughout the county. We have stood up a, a, uh, website that has information on it. Um, so we're, we're just in that, kinda that public information gathering phase of what do you want? What, what, what do you vision for the future of Adams County? So certainly would encourage everybody to, um, add their voice to that, to that. It's a, it's a, I don't know how many question survey it is, but it takes. Um, I knew you were gonna ask me that Eric, and I don't have it off the top of my head, but I'll get that for you. But, uh, but that's going on as far as the, the vision plan, um.
Just a question if I could. Do you see this culminating in two different documents, one being vision plan, one being land use plan? Or will it be combined in one document or how do you see?
Right, right now, the vision plan is kinda what the focus is. There is an opportunity for the Plan Commission to work with American Structure Point to update the comprehensive land use plan. I think they've kind of, um, they've had their hands full lately and have really not been able to make much progress on that.
So they will be two separate doc.
There will be two separate documents. Yeah, we're not gonna, I, I think they have to, I think they have to work hand in glove. But I think they're gonna be two separate documents. We're gonna, the next thing we're gonna see is we're gonna see a, uh, a, what they call a current conditions report. Uh, I've reviewed a draft of that. I think we'll see that current conditions report and, and that'll be presented to the Commissioners here. Uh, hopefully within the next, uh, thirty days or so. And there's a, it's about a ninety-page report of kind of what they've found so far as far as what the current status is. So hopefully we get that and we're gonna take a look at that, but that then the, we're, they'll be, they're gonna be working throughout the summer, the, the festival season, the four H Fair, the Swiss Days, the whatever. Um, uh, gathering information from, from the public. So they'll, we'll be at four H Fair, we'll be at Swiss Days, we'll be at, um, maybe some of the, the, uh, summer concert series and, and Decatur, uh, just trying to, uh, have conversation and gather information.
Now Steve, when it's, when it's all said and done. Okay, the vision plan is, is what you're discussing and then we have the county comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive land use plan.
Yeah, right. When, when something comes up that there wants to be a major, whether it's solar, wind turbines, on and on and on. And they, we, there's a, does the, um, initiative work well with the overall comprehensive plan? So the, the vision plan will not be the document that's looked at.
Not be the governing document for, for land use. That comprehensive land use plan remains that guiding document that the Plan Commission would use whenever they're trying to make those kinda decisions.
However, some of the information that's gained in the vision plan could be used as a, as, as change some of the wording in the.
Influence comprehensive land use plan. Yeah, I agree. I think that's a fair statement, Doug.
So like he said, they'll be two side-by-side documents.
So that's, uh, that's kinda where that process is at. Again, we hope to wrap that up by the end of the year. So that's, uh, but we're moving along on that. Uh, we have a conference call with them, uh, uh, every other Tuesday afternoon and just kind of where you at, what's the next step? Uh, we're working, uh, to try to figure out how to engage, um, the Amish community. So we're still trying to figure out how we can make that happen. So that's, that's kind of a big, uh, it's a big deal for us. Figure out how we, uh, how we begin to see what their vision is for their, for their, uh, community.
I'd, so that's all I have.
Only just a, something, a quick run by Tony. I don't, don't have to bring it up in the meeting, I guess, but you heard any more on, on the lit taxes and stuff, how, what they're doing with that?
Well, I can tell you that on July eighth, uh, Jason Semler from Baker Tilly is going to be here to discuss Senate Bill One, House of Road Act fourteen twenty-seven. There's also going to be a public hearing regarding lit and whether or not the fiscal body wants to make any changes this year, leave it the same. With everything going on, there's going to be a discussion and a public hearing. Because quite frankly, if they decide they wanna make a change, this public hearing is one of the first steps you have to do and there are thirty-day waiting periods for everything going through that. The only thing that is clear from what I've heard from Travis on more than one occasion is the P T R C will go away in twenty twenty-eight, which is the property tax relief credits. Those will end in twenty-eight and right now that's point two nine of our lit. Our current lit is one point six oh and it's capped right now. The max is two point five. So we have a ways to go. If we lose property tax money, there is a way to gain income tax for our county. So we're in pretty decent shape. As far as that goes, I, they're going to discuss this lit again next year. That's why they, Travis, they, they pushed it out on purpose, knowing they're meeting again next year and there probably will be changes.
Cause the way it is now, the changes won't be in effect till twenty-seven anyway.
At least, at least as far as lit is concerned, yes.
No, no enforced changes or whatever. But like you said, council would still have the opportunity to, to reconsider.
Yes, and, and Clayton might be able to speak better on this than me. I don't know. The, the Commissioners and Council both play a part with lit in a way because you all determine the seat it. For example, a hundred thousand dollars to council on aging, sixty thousand dollars to the sewer, or fifty thousand dollars to the sewer district, that type of thing. That's the Commissioner's portion of it. The Council's portion of it is the percentages, certified shares, public safety, P S A P and all that. That's their purview. So they, they have, if they wanted to start in January and they wanna make a change, that final vote has to be in October. And you have to notify all the cities and towns. You have to notify taxpayers. I have to enter all that information into Gateway so that the L G F sees it. All the notifications, there's a thirty-day waiting period. Once you email all of them. As it stands now, the County Council is still fifty-five percent of the income tax council. So whatever decision they make right now is, is theirs. It doesn't matter, matter what the other ones vote. If, if what Travis and the bill is saying with lit, those tax councils will go away. And cities and towns thirty-five hundred or above can create their own, county can create its own. Then there's like a certain caps that you have on that. It's, it's just, I, I think that's what they're gonna discuss next year to see what changes, if any, they make regarding changing of lit. So that's about all I know right now. It's kinda pushed out. I don't think, I don't think we need to so much worry about lit until probably next year.
It'll be interesting to listen to Jason.
Is he, is he, is he gonna, is he gonna be in the Commissioners meeting or is he? That's right.
But I assume the Commissioners will be here. Uh, matter of fact, I know several other counties are going to watch our livestream because they also wanted to hear Jason. And I, I, I kind of invited him to come and speak on this the last time he and I spoke. I, I felt it was good for all, all of you guys to hear, uh, to see if he has any, you know, more information than what we do. But you might also help the council regarding any lit changes, which may or may not need to be done.
Well, Jason certainly helped us in the past, so he's a smart guy.
Yep.
That'll be next weekend, right?
Yeah, July the eighth. Jason Semler, S E M L E R. Baker Tilly.
I shouldn't be here by nine.
Okay.
That's so confusing.
I will not be here at all next week. But I'll, I'll try and dial into the meeting. I'll try and get, so I can at least. I, I don't know whether, I assume I have to get an invite. I can listen to you on YouTube, but if I'm gonna actually, if you're actually gonna have, be able to hear me.
Right, but I mean, if somebody's watching us now, they just dial into YouTube.
Yeah, they just look at, they just pull up on YouTube and it's right there. Yeah, so, uh, so next week.
Royalties, shouldn't?
So, so next week Stan, assuming you're gonna be here, you have to run the meeting and I'll just be a strap hanger on the. Hanging out there on the side.
Make sure, make sure that he's.
I'll do that.
Council one.
Okay.
Alright, just so you understand, I usually roll with an iron fist.
Yeah, but, but if I don't like it, I'll just turn it off. I'll go, go to Dollywood. Very good. Okay. Anything else?
I don't.
Anything for the public?
How do you spell Dollywood?
I hear ya. Okay.
I'm a weirder.
Regent.